Madam Chair, I believe we are now ready for a roll call votes of the Commission. And Madam Chair, I believe you are muted.
Thank you, David. And yes, will you please do a roll call vote of the members of the Commission, please?
Okay, all Commissioners, please unmute yourself when I call your name so I can record your votes. Commissioner Amix.
Present.
Commissioner Davis.
Present.
Commissioner Mahan.
Present.
Commissioner Linderman.
Present.
Okay, Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Okay, so, being, this being the first meeting of the year of 2021, thank goodness, 2021, I can say that. I want to thank everyone for my year on the Board. I've enjoyed it as Chair, but it is time for my term to end. So, we will entertain a motion for new officers for the Commission on Local Government. Do I have a nomination for Chair?
I'm happy to nominate.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Davis, please.
Okay, I hear.
I second it.
Alright, so that's Mike Amix who made the motion, and Diane made the second. All those in favor, David, please do a roll call vote of the members.
Okay, Commissioner Amix.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Do I, do I vote on this?
I believe you can, but you can also abstain if you would like.
I will abstain, how about that?
Okay. Commissioner Mahan?
Aye.
And Commissioner Linderman?
Yes.
Okay, Madam Chair, I believe that was three votes, aye, one abstention.
So congratulations to our new Chair, Stephanie Davis.
Thank you.
And I now hand over the gavel, as that may do happen, to you, please.
David, do you want me to jump into the nominations for Vice Chair?
Yes, yes, if you would, please, thank you.
Okay, should we have a motion for our Vice Chair of the Commission on Local Government?
I'd like to nominate Diane Linderman, please.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. David, so all those, are you going to take roll call?
Yes, yes, so that motion was made by Commissioner Amix, seconded by Commissioner Mahan. So Commissioner Amix.
Approve.
Commissioner Davis.
Approve.
Commissioner Mahan.
Aye.
Aye.
And Commissioner Linderman?
I'll abstain.
Okay. Madam Chair, that was three votes, aye, and one abstention. That motion passes.
Okay, so we can proceed to the next section of our agenda, the Administration section. The first item is approval of the draft meeting agenda. Any changes, amendments, do I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Oh, wait a minute, I think I did that wrong. It's the draft meeting agenda.
It's the agenda, yes, thank you.
Well, I'll move to approve the draft meeting, or the meeting agenda.
Excellent, a second?
Second.
Okay, that motion was made by Commissioner Linderman and seconded by Commissioner Mahan. Commissioner Amix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahan?
Aye.
And Commissioner Linderman?
Aye.
Okay, that was four votes in favor. The meeting agenda has been approved.
Thank you. Our next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting on November 12th. And I do have a note, the staff did not receive any comments. Are there any comments or changes to the minutes? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Make the motion to accept the minutes as provided.
Okay, do I have a second? Thank you.
Okay, that was a motion by Commissioner Mahan, seconded by Commissioner Linderman. Commissioner Amix?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahan?
Aye.
And Commissioner Linderman?
Aye.
Madam Chair, that vote was four zero. The minutes have been approved.
Thank you. Item C, public comment period, so Cody, I'll ask, do we have anyone who pre-registered to speak?
Madam Chair, I had no one reach out to express an intent to comment during this time.
Any comments in advance of the meeting?
No, ma'am.
Okay, okay. David, is it okay to go to the next? I'll close the public comment period, is that what I need to do?
You can certainly also ask if anybody, any member of the public attending electronically would like to speak.
Okay.
We did not hear from anybody in advance of this meeting who is attending that would like to speak, but we can certainly make that option available.
Is there anyone on the line that would like to speak during a public comment period? No? Okay. Then I guess I'll formally close it. I'll do better next time and formally open it up. So, Item D, Policy Administrators' Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy New Year to members of the Commission, staff, and those of you attending from the public. I have several updates to share with you. First and foremost, a staff update. Kristin Dollman is the new Policy and Legislative Director for DHCD, so congratulations to her. I would also like to offer an opportunity for her to provide some remarks if she would like.
Hey, good morning, everyone. Good to see you all in 2021. So, yep, as David mentioned, I did get a promotion. I will still be frequenting these meetings as much as possible as my schedule allows, so I'm not, I'm not going anywhere. I'll just be here in a new capacity. As you're all used to, we do have three dedicated staff members for the Commission on Local Government, so we do intend to fill my old position. We'll probably wait till after the General Assembly session, but rest assured, we will have someone new coming in. But I'm excited about the new role and working with you all in, over the next few years. So feel free to reach out to me if you need anything. The Commission on Local Government is a really important part of DHCD and our relationship with local governments and intergovernmental relationships. And, I mean, I've just found that my time serving on the Commission on Local Government has really built such a great foundation as I'm, you know, kind of taking on a role, looking more into more statewide policies. So I appreciate all, all of your time and the work that you put into this, and especially David, Ali, and Cody for their work as well. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Kristin. So, in addition to that staff update, of course, we also have now a vacancy on the Commission. Commissioner Reynolds' term expired on December 31st of 2020. We will keep the Commissioners apprised of who the new Commissioner is once they've been selected. And I would also just add that as an item for the March Commission meeting, we will have a commending resolution for the Commission's consideration, honoring and thanking Commissioner Reynolds for his service to the Commission and to the Commonwealth. In addition to that, I would like to bring up the Conflicts of Interest Act, Statements of Economic Interest. By now, members of the Commission, you should have received an email from, I believe it came from Kyle Flanders, but it may have come from a generic email account, but you are required to file a Statement of Economic Interest annually. That is due on February 1st of 2021. If you have any questions as you're filling out your Statement of Economic Interest, certainly let me know, and I will try to either answer the question for you or get you to the right person who can answer that question. Moving on, as it relates to matters before the Commission, again, certainly we have the Martinsville Reversion case before the Commission. I reached out to parties, the parties for the city and the county, for a status update on negotiations and other logistical matters as it relates to the Commission's proceedings, especially with everything that's coming up in March. What I would like to do is just share, quite frankly, a transcript, a word-for-word transcript of the updates that I received from George Lyle, the County Attorney for Henry County, and Eric Monday, the City Attorney for Martinsville. So to begin, from Henry County, Mr. Lyle stated, "The city and county have met several times and discussed portions of an agreed-upon disposition. We have additional meetings scheduled. We have agreed to hire and have hired a lobbyist to assist us in requesting the General Assembly fund costs associated with reversion that both the city and county believes should be borne, at least in part, by the Commonwealth. Additionally, the county is securing locations to file documents for public review to comply with requirements for public access to the filings. I am sending this email without discussion with Eric Monday, however, I will get with Eric and outside councils and discuss our response to the other matters he raised." Those other matters that I raised, again, are operational logistics as it relates to the Commission's March proceedings. And also, again, from Mr. Eric Monday from the City of Martinsville, "I'll add, like George responding to you directly in more detail, in that the primary goal of the lobbyist, David Halleck, Two Capitals Consulting, this General Assembly session, is to address the issue of using the lower Martinsville's LCI, Local Composite Index, for state funding of the consolidated school system, similar to the incentive given to Bedford. We are also seeking to have regional school programs, such as the Local Governor's School, continue to be granted regional designation for state funding purposes, even though Martinsville will no longer be a participant. Given that the city's target date for reversion is July 2022, to allow a full academic year for the schools work, schools to work through the consolidation, we anticipate a formal budget request in fiscal year 2022, 2023, not in this session. Our lobbyist suggests requesting a study this year, either by Department of Education, Commission on Local Government, or the two in conjunction. Secondarily, we have asked our lobbyist to advocate for the recommendations contained in the Commission on Local Government's recent annexation study. We hope to enlist both VACO and VML in that effort. You will recall, both Henry County and Martinsville contributed to that discussion, and the Commission on Local Government's recommendations are excellent, both for our reversion process and for future application to localities statewide. The General Assembly needs to act upon those recommendations." And that concludes Mr. Monday's statement. Again, I alluded to reaching out to the parties regarding detailed logistics concerning the oral presentations and public hearing that will be before the Commission in March. This is the first time the Commission has ever facilitated that entire process virtually, so I just think it would be prudent for staff to iron out those details more specifically than, than we have in the past. I would also remind members of the Commission to send me any questions they may have regarding their review of the case materials. Staff will be compiling a list of follow-up questions to the parties and sending those by Friday, January 8th, in accordance with Commission's adopted review schedule. As far as staff activities are concerned, I would like to give a special kudos to Cody Anderson for helping with municipal utility relief during the course of the last, well, two and a half months. Cody and I have simultaneously been working on a municipal utility relief program in addition to collecting a variety of pieces of information that Cody will report on momentarily on utility customer data. Ali has also been assisting with updating the guidelines to DHCD's Industrial Revitalization Fund Program to better consider fiscal stress as a factor of need. And then I shared with members of the Commission just several articles of local interests. I won't go through those in any degree of detail, but one, actually two in particular that may be worth highlighting are related to the Augusta County Courthouse, which I've shared with the Commission previously. There was a voter referendum that failed that would have proposed relocating Augusta County's courthouse to a different location outside of the City of Stanton. They are now working to identify a location within the city limits and have run into some obstacles and are trying to work out those details with City Council and the Historic Preservation Committee for the city. There was also an article that was rather interesting about McLean. McLean is not any incorporated community within the Commonwealth, but there is a citizens' association that is interested in McLean becoming potentially an independent city. The article mentions the Commission on Local Government's role in the case. Of course, currently, McLean would be prohibited from becoming an independent city in the Commonwealth due to the moratoria that are in place, I believe, until 2024. But just keep an eye out for that one. Beyond that, if there are any follow-up questions to anything that I've presented, I'm happy to answer those from anyone on the Commission. And hearing no questions, Madam Chair, that concludes my Policy Administrators' Report.
Thank you, David, and thank you to the staff, and congratulations, Kristin, and everyone, and Cody. Thank you very much for all the work you're putting, have put into our next report, our next section, the Municipal Utility Data Report. So Cody, I will turn this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission and folks in the, in the general public who may not know me, my name is Cody Anderson. I'm with the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. I have helped staff the Commission on Local Government. I also have various duties across the, across the agency. Today, what I'm going to be sharing with you is a Municipal Utility Data Report. So this report was mandated by the 2020 Appropriations Act. While it was in the same couple of paragraphs as the Municipal Utility Relief Program, it's actually separate and measures different types of funding that came into localities to help support paying down arrears for, for folks in those localities. So I will note that this is in your packet. So if you have any detailed questions, most of that should be covered. A brief introduction, so in Item 4-14.00, Paragraph 7A to the 2020 Appropriations Act as amended, there's a requirement that utilities not subject to regulation by the State Corporation Commission. Essentially, municipal local, municipal utilities submit information on the status of customer accounts to the Commission on Local Government. Each utility is required to report to the Commission information covering a specific time period. For this report, it was March 16th, 2020, through December 15th, 2020. There were various data points that we needed to collect. I will note that this, this report was, or the, the data for this report was all, was all collected via a survey tool that was sent out to all relevant localities. And it asked the following questions that were outlined within the 2020 Appropriations Act. So questions include the number and total value of accounts that were at least 30 days in arrear. And again, I want to note that this was as of December 15th. The number and value of accounts that were at least 60 days in arrears. Number, total value, and average debt of accounts that are participating in the repayment plan or another repayment plan as set by the utility. The number of accounts removed from the repayment plan or another repayment plan as set forth by the utility, and then categories by reason. The amount of an average debt still remaining for accounts removed from the repayment plan or another repayment plan as set forth by the utility. The carrying cost of, of the debt for accounts participating in a repayment plan and any associated administrative costs incurred. The number, total value, and average debt of accounts offset by funds provided in Item 479.10, Paragraph B.2 of this Act, of the Appropriations Act. And local programs using coronavirus relief funds categorized by days in arrears, customer account type, and coronavirus relief fund type. And then, last but not least, the cumulative level of customer arrears by locality. Now I'm going to go through each of these questions and essentially answer the questions that were, that were asked of the localities. And it may be useful, in your packet, you should have this report in its entirety. And there is also a sample of the survey tool that was sent to localities, so you can kind of get a look at exactly what they were looking at when they answered the, the questions that we're about to go over.
And for members of the Commission, just for clarification, I emailed that report separately from your packet because your packets were sent out prior to the report deadline, so just, just an FYI.
Thank you, David. And I will, one more item before we move into the specific data points here. This report, while it was due to be submitted back at the end of last year, it does have to be completed a couple of more times. So this thing, these same questions and the same data will have to be resubmitted to us so that we can resubmit it to the Secretary of Commerce and Trade and the General Assembly. It has to be done at the end of next year, so at the end of 2021, at the end of 2022, and then shortly after the end of the moratorium on, on disconnection of utilities. So this isn't the first time we're going to see this, but this is the report as of, again, March 16th through December 15th. So in terms of answers to your questions, the number and total value of accounts that were at least 30 days in arrears, and these are all numbers that were, that were compiled from all the submissions that we caught from all the utilities. So you had 513,945 accounts with a value of over $88 million. Those accounts that are at least 60 days in arrears, there were 423,000 accounts with over $81 million in arrears. The note, the number, total value, and average debt of accounts that are participating in the repayment plan or any other repayment plan, there were nearly 43,000 accounts with a total value of over $20 million. The average debt of those accounts really ranged, as you can see, there was just about $82 upwards to almost $7,000. And then the number of accounts removed from repayment plans or another repayment plan is set forth by the utility categorized by reason. Now, the reasons weren't explicitly stated in the Appropriations Act. So in the survey tool, we gave two different categorizations, a full repayment balance and then a more generic other category, so that we could measure as many as possible. So there were four, there are just over 14,000 accounts that were removed because they had fully paid off their balances. And then just over 16,000 accounts that were removed for having the generic other reason. So moving on, the Appropriations Act asks the amount and average debt still remaining for accounts removed from repayment plans or another repayment plan as set forth by the utility. So of those accounts removed with outstanding balances, so again, those that would have been categorized under the other reason, they had nearly $5 million in debt, or $5 million value, with an average debt ranging from about $90 to almost $3,000. This next question is a little bit interesting, and it deals with the carrying cost and associated administrative costs. So we, we found, as we went through and we asked this question to a lot of localities, a majority of them just don't track this, or they include these numbers just in their, in their accounts or in their accounting. So while we have numbers here, these aren't necessarily the most accurate of numbers, because, again, most of these localities just don't track what the carrying cost or administrative costs are. So, but as you can see, we have $454,000 in carrying costs that were reported and about $475,000 in additional administrative costs. Now, this question, the cumulative level of customer arrears by locality, this is actually in, in the report that you received. You'll have an appendix that has every bit of data that we collected, and it actually has all of that information spelled out. I did skip a question, which I want to move on to right now because it was, in many ways, the most complicated and expansive question. And that is the number, total value, average debt of accounts offset by funds provided in Item 4479.10, Paragraph B.2 of the Appropriations Act, and local programs using coronavirus relief funds categorized by days in arrears, customer account type, and coronavirus relief fund type. Now, a couple of these different parts of this question weren't specifically spelled out. So we, as staff, decided to kind of choose the categories that we measured based on both residential and non-residential. And then in terms of coronavirus relief type, we spelled this out as simply as we could for, for localities, and that was the 479.10 had to do with the 2020 Appropriations Act, which was a municipal, municipal utility relief program funding. And once we get further into the data, I'm going to explain why that's important. Because we didn't get a lot of submissions that, like, accounted for that, but there's a very specific reason for that. You have Direct Cares Act funding, which a majority of localities weren't eligible to receive Direct Cares Act funding. The only locality that was eligible to receive Cares Act funding directly from the federal government was Fairfax. And then we have indirect Cares Act funding, so that's going to be any funding that came through the state and then was allocated to a locality, which then the locality used for utility relief. So here are the answers to that long spiel that I just gave you. For residential accounts, you'll see that Appropriations Act accounted for a total of three accounts for just over $2,000, or just under $2,000, and the same thing applies for 60 days. Now, the reason that that number is so low is a majority, and clearly a vast majority of localities, hadn't received money to allocate to accounts as of the end deadline for this report, which was December 15th. Now, we anticipate next year that we're going to find that this number has gone up exponentially. There was over $50 million in money that was allocated through the Appropriations Act. The fact of the matter is, it just hadn't reached the accounts of these localities yet, so they weren't able to account for it here because it hadn't been expended yet. So expect next year's report to have a much, much, much larger number in this area. Under direct and indirect, if you look into the report that was submitted to you, there really wasn't anything under direct. Fairfax didn't, didn't appropriate any of their Direct Cares Act money to utilities. So all those numbers ended up being zero, so what you're seeing here is actually all indirect Cares Act funding. So for accounts that were 30 days in arrears or more, there was a total value of $1.5 million across just about 30, or just about 3,000 accounts. And then account 60 days or more in arrears, there was just under $3 million in value across just about 4,000 accounts. Resident, non-residential accounts, there really wasn't nearly as much dedicated to that, but you'll see that there weren't nearly as many accounts either. So no Appropriations Act funding had been allocated to non-residential. We do expect that number to go up next year, clearly, but we're not exactly sure about how much that's going to be. If the direct and indirect Cares Act allocations are any indication, it's probably going to be substantially less than what is going to residential accounts. But direct and indirect, we have about $130,000 that went to about 62 accounts. And then for indirect Cares Act funding, just over 300,000 went to accounts, to 90 days, or 90 accounts. I know that was a lot of information, and I tend to speak very, very fast, and I do apologize. What questions do you guys have?
Cody, please, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a quick question. You added quite a bit of important information, especially on that last page, about why numbers were as low as they were and so forth. For historical purposes, going forward... will be similar, providing similar information. Is, would it behoove you to include that extra information as to why these numbers were lower this first year? I mean, I don't know, but that just seems important information to me.
Sure. Um, it's likely in next year's report, uh, that it'll have a little bit more compare and contrast, uh, between the previous year's report and this report, uh, with a little bit of narrative that's indicating, hey, you know, we had a substantial increase from Appropriations Act funding from last year as opposed to this year to the tune of millions upon millions of dollars. And this is why, uh, why we're at that point. So I, I intend to definitely include, um, a narrative reasoning why the numbers contrast so, so much. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just don't want us to lose that, because that's important information as to why this, I don't want someone to come in later and go, well, why is it so low here? And now all of a sudden this year, you know, it's so high. I just think, even as a footnote in, you know, in your report, to just explain, hey, this, these numbers are low and this is why. Just everything you just said to us while you were doing the report, that's just my personal thought. But thank you so much.
Yeah. Madam Chair, members of the commission, if I may interject on that as well, and I, I think that is a very good, uh, suggestion, uh, going forward, however, I would like, um, to consider that internally among staff as well. The directive that was granted or that was given to staff, uh, the commission and DHCD, we have just interpreted strictly based upon, upon the different factors. I believe there were eight or nine of them listed in the Appropriations Act. I would just suggest exercising a little bit of caution as well with interpreting, um, any of the data as well, um, unless we were directed to do so through, uh, Appropriations Act language. Again, just playing devil's advocate here, that's certainly a call for, uh, the commission and agency leadership to make, but just, I, I want to put that out there for, for consideration.
Uh, this is Diane Linderman. I have a question, um, based on the numbers of survey, um, emails you sent out, did you, how, what was the compliance rate?
A vast majority. I don't have a, a direct percentage for you. I know there, there was a small handful, um, off the top of my head that didn't meet the deadline, um, and I want to say that was four or five, um, that got back to me after this, uh, report was due. So there was a very small handful, but a vast majority of, um, the folks that we reached out to did get back to us on the report. Um, and I'm happy to get that information to you if, um, if you would like it.
I'm not sure if Cody had shared this, but we received a total of 146 responses that are, uh, that, that's what this data reflects in the report.
So David and Cody, I'm going to follow up on Diane's comments. Do we know how many responses we should have gotten versus who we didn't, you know, versus who we received? And is it appropriate to note those folks that did not report, um, as part of the report? And I apologize, you may have done that. I just got through the summary section.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a, uh, very good question. Honestly, that number, uh, in my view, seems larger, but we, I'm not sure if we have, uh, the information that would, uh, give us an absolute certainty as to what that specific total, uh, would be. As we've been working on not only this report, but also the municipal utility relief program, uh, we've been, uh, sort of inundated and, uh, overwhelmed by the complexity and comprehensive nature of the municipal utility world, um, in Virginia. So I think we may have greater clarity on that going forward, uh, but I, I would want to exercise some degree of caution in terms of, um, making a determination as to who, uh, responded and, and those who were supposed to respond and, and did not.
Because we don't know the front piece of that equation, correct? And that's okay. It's an interesting point that we, that we, being the state, you know, how do we make sure we know how many utility systems are out there? It's just very interesting.
And, and thank you for that, uh, comment, uh, Madam Chair. I, what I would add to that, um, is that when we, um, initiated this data collection tool, uh, if I recall correctly, and Cody can clarify if I missed something, but I believe we sent this to every chief administrative officer for every city, county, and town in the Commonwealth. In addition to those individuals or points of contact we had for the municipal utility relief program, we tried to be as comprehensive as we could, uh, in our outreach. I do believe we also engaged with, uh, various stakeholders, VACO, VML, the Virginia Municipal Water Association, uh, the Municipal Electric Providers Association of Virginia, uh, several others. Uh, again, we've gained a lot more knowledge through this whole process of, of the true landscape of municipal utilities, um, in Virginia, but that was over such a condensed short period of time that I think we will learn more as we go forward.
I have one more question. Um, if we do, in, in the reports, I mean, in the tables at towards the end, if we do not see a locality listed in there, even to say zero amounts, um, do we assume they did not report?
Madam, um, Madam Commissioner, so those, um, in that table, there aren't any localities that did not respond. Uh, so I didn't put in a, a utility that like I knew should have responded and put zeros in, um, they're just omitted completely. Um, so if, uh, if a utility didn't respond and they're, they're not on that table, I don't have data for them. Does that make sense?
Well, I was looking, let's just say, for example, I come from Westmoreland County, so I immediately went and looked at Westmoreland County to see what the numbers would be, and Westmoreland County isn't included. So I'm trying to figure out why. The town of Montross is there, the town of Colonial Beach is there, but Montross, the county, is not, whereas other counties are. So I'm trying to figure out, did that mean they did not report, or they don't have any utilities, or what does that mean? Because I know they do have utilities, so I'm trying to figure out.
Thank you for the, uh, question on that. Commissioner Mahan, this is David Conme, if I may, uh, help try to answer that. Utility services are traditionally something that is more of an urban type service, so it's, it would be, uh, usual or traditional to see municipalities, cities and towns, uh, answering this question. That does not mean that, uh, counties are excluded, uh, from providing this service. Oftentimes, you would see a county service provided through a public service authority or a sanitation district, uh, or something like that. So just because, uh, Westmoreland County in its terminology is not listed there, does not mean that there isn't a service authority, uh, that's providing services to county residents. I would also add that, uh, in many cases, municipal utilities that are provided by a town, for example, the town of Montross, oftentimes those services, uh, extend beyond the corporate limits of the town of Montross and, and would actually be servicing Westmoreland County. Uh, so that's also, again, why the landscape of utility services is, is very different, uh, in Virginia and does not, um, 100% comport with, uh, the volume and quantity of county cities and towns and authorities and other political subdivisions in the Commonwealth.
Okay, I understand. They have two sanitary districts. I know where they are, and I know I was involved in helping set, set them up. That's why I went looking for it, and, and I'm not finding it. And that's why I'm just wondering, did they not report? Did they not send in their report? And do I need to go knock on someone's door personally? Or, um, is it just information that, for whatever reason, wasn't needed? So I'm just, they, I mean, these are two service authorities that are outside of the town of Montross. Montross has its own sewer and that type of thing, but this, so just asking the question. What did it mean if there's an omission?
And, and thank you for that, and that, and that's helpful. Uh, and I think that will help us going forward with, uh, future, future data collection efforts.
Okay, thank you.
You know, and Rosemary, I'm going to pick up on what you're saying because in many cases, not particularly this case, but if a locality doesn't report, then information's not getting to them, and they could be losing out on money, they could be losing out on grants, whatever it might be. So it almost is a bigger issue that if we don't, if we have localities that aren't reporting to a state legal legislative activity, what else is missing? And I just think it's, you know, I, I think it's concerning that we don't have local governments not responding. More to protect them rather than to poke at them.
Sure, exactly my point. Thank you.
David, I did have one quick question. Um, if and when, um, let me rephrase the question. When will this report become public?
Technically speaking, I do believe, Madam Chair, that this is already a, a public document. It has been shared with, uh, those who were directed to receive it in the Appropriations Act language. That's the chairs of the money committees, um, two other chairs of, um, uh, other committees within the House and Senate. The names escaped me off the top of my head, Secretary of Commerce and Trade. And so, yes, we will, um, and I, I do not see within the Appropriations Act language anything that would protect this, uh, this report or data from the Freedom of Information Act. So technically, that, yes, that makes it a, a public document, and we will respond accordingly based on, on that interpretation.
Okay. Um, at this point, are there any other questions or comments on the report? Who knew municipal utilities would be so exciting? Um, so I think I need, uh, uh, David, you would like this approved by the commission?
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, while we have already shared this, um, as of December 31st with those who were directed to receive it, um, when this budget language and study directive was placed in the Appropriations Act, the, the reporting timeline did not comport with the commission's adopted review schedule. So out of a formality, uh, we think that it would be appropriate for the commission to also consider this report, uh, for adoption, uh, and so that, that is essentially the purpose for, for today's presentation.
Perfect. Um, so do I have a motion for adoption of the municipal utility data report?
So moved. Diane Linderman.
Diane. Do I have a second?
Yes, I second that.
So Diane has made a motion and seconded by Rosemary, and I will get more formal and use last names, but, uh, this is as good as it gets today. Um, and then David, I'll turn it over to you to do roll call.
And now I was muted. I repeat myself. Madam, uh, thank you again, Madam Chair. Uh, all commissioners, when I call your name, uh, please state aye or nay, uh, so I can report your vote. Commissioner Amex.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Mahan.
Aye.
And Commissioner Linderman.
Aye.
Madam Chair, that was, uh, four votes in favor.
Perfect. Okay. Um, so that, uh, report is approved. Thank you. The next, uh, item, is that four? Trying to get my Roman numerals. Fiscal stress report for 2018, 2019. Ali, I think you may have an update for us.
Good afternoon, everybody, and this is Ali Agbor, and I'm Senior Public Finance Analyst for the Commission. And, uh, regarding the fiscal stress report, I still don't have the data for all localities so far. City of Petersburg, City of Hopkell, and City of Norton, Lee County, Prince Edward County, and West County, they're, they didn't, you know, submit their CAFO as of, uh, I think before Christmas Eve. So if they, you know, posted that and after that, and I don't think so, then, you know, maybe there are some new localities, but it still is other localities. They are late, and, uh, also, if you, I mean, recall, I think we gave that update last time, I forgot when, like, uh, in the 2020 General Assembly Session, uh, it was before COVID-19, uh, SB 406, uh, was passed, and they extend the locality's deadline, uh, from November 30 to December 15. Uh, it is their reporting deadline, so that means usually we produce a fiscal stress report in January, but because of this, you know, new deadline, I don't think we'll be able to, you know, produce the report in January because even every, if, there is nobody late, uh, to submit their CAFO, and APA, they, I think they have 30 days to compile all those data and verify and whatever they do, and then they post the report in their website. So our January report is usually, you know, like first week, or, uh, that's the usual timeline. So APA will not be able to provide the report before January meeting. So I think going forward, we have to probably produce the report in future date, I mean, not in January, maybe we will, I mean, as we are doing it like last few years, like in July, so maybe July would be our new normal for fiscal stress report. So I think that's all from me, and I don't, uh, have anything, you know.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ali.
Thank you.
Uh, 2021 General Assembly Session, David, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Dave Conme. Um, I'll keep my comments fairly brief, uh, for the sake of time, uh, but, uh, the 2021 General Assembly Session will begin, uh, next Wednesday, uh, January 13th. There has been discussion of making this a shorter session. Uh, it's already referred to as the short session, and traditionally, that has been a 45-day period. Uh, I do believe, I've heard that, uh, this could be a 30-day, uh, short session. That matter seems to be, uh, to be determined. Um, but perhaps if others have other intel that would like to share, uh, we'd certainly welcome that. I will also add that from a logistical perspective, that could mean that, uh, if it does end up being a 30-day session, that some of the committees and subcommittees that meet normally during, uh, Monday through Friday may also end up meeting on the weekends, but we, we are still waiting for additional, um, intel and guidance there. As of yesterday afternoon, there were a total of 104 bills, uh, that had been introduced from the House and Senate. Four of those were municipal charter bills, uh, which will, uh, more than likely, almost absolutely be referred to DHCD staff for review. Uh, there are another 40-plus bills, uh, that I just scrolled through, um, that looked like they had some degree of local interest, uh, covering a variety of topics, including elections, education, personal property taxes, the Children's Services Act, and others. I think by the time we have the March commission meeting, staff can certainly share with you, uh, more detail on the outcome of, of many of those proposals. I'll also note that the governor reintroduced his, uh, budgets on, uh, December 16th, 2020. Uh, the Commission on Local Government line item in that budget was held harmless. PDC funding was also held harmless, uh, but I will note that, um, prior to all of the, uh, issues, including fiscal matters related to COVID-19, there was a proposed increase of $14,000 per PDC, uh, in the budgets. Again, that was unallotted. Again, that was unallotted. When the budget was revisited, again, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, that $14,000 per PDC increase has not been reintroduced. I will also note that DHCD received several proposed funding increases for the Housing Trust Fund, the Virginia Rent and Mortgage Relief Program, the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative Program, and the Virginia Main Street Program. Beyond that, that's my general summary of session. And I would now turn it over to Ali to talk about the fiscal impact analysis process for this year.
Thank you, David. And fiscal impact statement, we, you know, I mean, before the session, we follow a procedure, and Commission on Local Government is required to submit a fiscal impact statement to the legislating branch per the provision of 30-19.03. And that code requires CLG to produce the fiscal impact statement if any bills that require a net reduction of revenue or not net increase of expenditure of any local government. So to provide that fiscal impacts of any bill to the legislating branch, CLG recruit local volunteers for local impacts. To complete this process, CLG maintain a web portal, and all local volunteers are added to the web portal. Local volunteers log into the web portal to provide their estimated impact of any bill. And the volunteers are divided in four categories based on bill committees. So one of the category is finance, and that includes the Bill Committee for Finance, Commerce, and Labor. And the second category is education, that is based on the Bill Committee for Education, Health, Rehabilitation, and Social Services. And the third category we have is general laws, that includes the Bill Committee for Laws, Technology, Courts, Elections, and Rules. And the final category we have is local government, that includes the Bill Committee for Local Government, Agriculture, Conservation, Natural Resources, and Transportation. So like every year, we, to recruit the volunteer, we reach out to last year's volunteers for volunteering this year. In addition, additionally, we also contact with VACO, VML, PDC, Virginia First CD, other professional organizations, and other professional organizations like, you know, Treasury Association of Virginia, Commission on Prevenues, and like BZFOA, BLGMA, like BSBA, like there are other, you know, professional organizations, we also contact them if anybody is interested to do the volunteer. So this year, so far, we received like 72 requests, and among that 72, 58 volunteers are from last year's. And we got 14 new volunteers this year. And within this 72 volunteers, the 16 cities signed up for volunteering and 16 towns signed up for volunteering, 31 counties signed up for volunteering, there are five PDC and two professional organizations. So in this 72 volunteer, 59 volunteers signed up for finance category, and 39 volunteers signed up for education category, and 62 volunteers signed up for local government category, and 39 volunteers signed up for general laws category. This is, you know, the status of this process as of now, and so far, I received like about 11 bills. None of them qualified for fiscal impact statements, and most of the bill is like, you know, local charter and things like that. So that's all related to fiscal impact statements as of now.
Thank you. And that's a good thing that you have more people now, correct? That's a great thing.
Yeah, when I started, actually, we used to have like 20, 22 volunteers, and now we have 72 volunteers. And last year, me and David, actually, we also prepared a, you know, fiscal impact analysis volunteer training video. So that basically, I think, is helping local volunteers to understand, you know, how to respond to any bill that has been assigned to them. So it is really helpful to them, I think.
Yeah, that's very good. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think we want to move on to schedule of our regular meetings. Mr. Anderson, I'll start moving to last names now.
Madam Chair, I can step in for Mr. Anderson on this, perhaps he's having some technical difficulties. I will just note, again, during your November 2020 meeting, the Commission adopted its meeting schedule for 2021. It's been included in your packet. Your next meeting will be held on, actually, next series of meetings, I should say, will be held Monday, March 22nd, 2021, through Wednesday, March 24th, 2021. These meetings not only relate to the Commission's regular meeting cycle, but they are also related to the oral presentations by the parties, namely the City of Martinsville and Henry County, as it relates to Martinsville's petition to revert to town status. Within that time period, there's also going to be a public hearing held by the Commission on Local Governments as required by statutes, and that is scheduled for Wednesday, March 24th, 2021. I will note, at this point, while the dates are confirmed, the times have not been confirmed. But I would encourage members of the Commission to keep your schedules as open as possible on those days, and especially on the 24th. The public hearing is normally something that is held in the evening, especially so that we can be, provide greater access to members of the public. Then the following day, Thursday, March 25th, will be the Commission's regularly scheduled meeting. That week of March is going to be very busy. You're going to be very sick of hearing from us by the end. But the Commission will hold a regular meeting and a special closed-session meeting to discuss the Martinsville case at that time. Then this is outside of the typical meeting cycle of meeting every other month, but the Commission is also scheduled to hold another special meeting on Thursday, April 22nd. And then finally, we'll get back into the Commission's regular meeting cycle, which is, again, included in your packet. And I will also note that for the duration of the Governor's declared state of emergency, all of these meetings will be held online in this virtual world. And once this is over, we will identify a physical location to meet. If that were to happen during 2021, I will note that the Virginia Housing Center, which is where the Commission normally hosts its meetings, they have made the decision to basically cancel and prohibit any in-person meetings in their facilities for the duration of 2021. If, for some reason, things were to change, we would have to probably identify an alternative location. But that's not expected.
Great, thank you. And then upcoming events of interest?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is also in your packet. Normally, this is a little bit longer of a list, not by much, but there's normally a lot more going on during the General Assembly Session as far as different legislative days and conferences are concerned. But I'll note, again, next Wednesday, the 2021 General Assembly Session begins, and then VACO, VML, DAPDC, and the Virginia Rural Center are all coordinating on Local Government Day at the Capitol on Thursday, January 28th, 2021. This will be through a WebEx online platform, and we are certainly excited to engage with our partners in that.
Great. Okay, anything else? I think that's other.
And Madam Chair, I have no other business to report to the Commission.
Okay, thank you all very, very much. Now, David, do I need to make a, you think I've never been to any of these meetings. Do I need to make a motion for adjournment?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would just encourage that for the record, especially through this online platform, so we have a recording and record of that.
Great. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
This is Diane Linderman. So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay, Linderman made the motion, Mahan seconded it. And do we want to do a roll call?
I'll do that again, just for the record, Madam Chair. So Commissioner Amix.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Mahan.
Aye.
And Commissioner Linderman.
Aye.
That is a vote of four in favor. This meeting is adjourned.
Great, great. Bye, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.